Well, hello and welcome to the City of Iowa City Work Session for February 16th, 2021. Sorry we're a little tardy getting started, but we had some Zoom issues that we were trying to navigate and now we're good to go. So, welcome councilors and I believe we have Ryan here from the UISG, so welcome. We want to start out our discussion on the OIR report. This was in the packet this time and it was also in the packet last time, I believe it was the 4th. No, it was the February 11th packet. And so, want to just dive into that conversation. This is the report that really stemmed from the June event and so we've had a little time to review this. There are 39 recommendations here in this report. So, wanted to just open it up for councilors to start the conversation.
Well, I'll start then. I appreciate the report and I appreciated the extra time to really go through it and digest it, as you'd said, the 39 recommendations and I think it was 76 pages long. That's a lot to go through, but I felt it was necessary and important to read through as much as I could to get through it. OIR stated that they hoped that the report would identify issues and promote concrete positive changes as well as help to rebuild trust in the community. They sought to describe what happened and tried to explain why it did, why it happened. One issue that became very apparent as it was brought up several times in their report was that of ineffective communication during the confrontation. In fact, at one time they described it as acoustically limited and only with the warnings, not only with the warnings that were given, which they also stated that the extent to which the protester group as a whole had heard and understood the warnings was unclear, but also in the communication among the officers and with the command post and even the dispatch of emergency vehicles, which was very concerning. And this is something that definitely I think warrants further thought and planning and looking into. I was disappointed to hear that the Iowa State Patrol didn't cooperate or participate in the report, especially since it was evident that they were ultimately responsible for making key decisions. However, OIR states that they, as OIR, were commissioned actually by the City of Iowa City, so their primary focus was indeed on actions by our police department. We had heard from some individuals that OIR had not spoken to anyone other than the Iowa City Police Department members, but reading this report reveals that this isn't true. They reached out to five individuals, they said, who had submitted correspondence and complaints to the CPRB relating to this and five people, only five responded to them, of which they talked to at length, they said. They said this contributed significantly to their report, which is a good point to make. Another point of concern that they raised was that there was little attempt to negotiate and this is another item that needs to be considered, I think, in the near future and that is the availability of a team that is especially trained in negotiations, even more so than just the crisis intervention training to help de-escalate any further incidents such as this. But as I've said before, I admire our police force and respect their duty to serve and protect our community and I will continue to stand by them and support them.
Not everybody at once.
Okay, I will go. I thought that one of the things that I wanted to do was go back and look at the original scope that was the scope of services that was laid out in the agreement that we signed off on last September, in part because of some comments from the public and in part just to refresh my memory. And from going through that today, it's clear to me that the report that OIR did was in line with the scope of services. There were about nine different things that they were supposed to do and they did them all as far as I could tell. So, they did say that they wished they could have been here and reached out to various members of the community, which is normally what they would do as part of their procedure, but the limitations put on by COVID prevented that. They had enormous and almost endless hours of body worn camera footage as well as in-car footage that was unedited as news footage, local media reports, as well as the people they talked to within the ICPD and then by email only apparently with UIPD and the Johnson County Sheriff's Office. It did strike me that a large number of the recommendations were communication based, one way or the other, either the need for much more robust and detailed written policy, the ability to communicate much better on a scene, whether that had to do with having a command post there or an onsite command post talking directly to other officers or in fact trying to get the word out to the public as to what was happening. And I mean, communication is always a challenge. It's something that I know a couple of us have been talking about in some detail, but I mean, I would step back and say that there was a lot of constructive and useful critique in this report. From my perspective, when if I review something or I have someone review me, I want people to tell me what I did wrong, what I could have done better and how I could make it better in the future. And it really struck me that this report endeavored to do that. Again, I recognize there's been a lot of public critique of this report in advance of us having a chance to talk to it. I wanted to address that specifically, both that it falls within the parameters of the scope of services and that it gave really very specific critiques and suggestions for how things can be improved and how the police department can function better, both on its own and in combination with other law enforcement agencies. And they recognized the complexity of the situation here with the number of law enforcement agencies operating in quite a small area. So, I'll stop with that right now.
I'll go. I think the other thing that struck me also and appreciate both Counselor Taylor and Counselor Weiner's comments was the context that OIR put this in that I think is really important as we look at this. When you really think about the timeframe and the history, how long it had really been since we have had demonstrations of this nature and this size in the community. I think some of the officers, you know, indicated there, you know, really hadn't been in their time in law enforcement. And so, when you look at what was happening nationally, even when you look at what was happening locally, I think there was an incredible amount of uncertainty from law enforcement as to really what the nature of the protests were and were going to develop into. As I recall from reading the report, just two or three days maybe prior to that, a couple of officers, I believe in Davenport, had been attacked. So, and I don't say that to make excuses up, but I think it's always important to put things into context. And I think we had a lot of people who were working on this who'd never worked on something like this before. I think another thing that they talked about was the issue of trying to get communication with the leaders of a protest group. So, you can kind of have some of that dialogue, not to shut them down, not to stop anything, but to have a little bit better understanding of what their intent is, where they're going. And we found that that was very, very difficult in the early going. I think the mayor, I think the mayor pro tem, I believe Supervisor Porter and others had tried to reach out and in those early days were not having a lot of success. I think another critical piece in this protest that complicated it was the protest was directly against law enforcement. So, there was no, there did not appear to be any interest on the part of the protesters to cooperate in any way, for example, by actually filling out completely a protest or a march application so that we could shut down streets and keep them safe and keep vehicles safe, et cetera. So, I think when you look at the context, I make those comments not to place blame on either side. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to, I think when you look at the whole context, those were some of the things going on. From that, I think I'm pleased that we ended up having the report done and not just saying, oh, all we need to know is who made the call. No, we need to learn from this incident what happened, why it happened, how it happened, and how can we do better and do it differently in the future. And I think these 39 recommendations, while in some cases as I read them seem somewhat repetitive, there are nuances to each of them, I think, in terms of a lot of the communication. I think they start us on a path to a much improved situation for our law enforcement and for law enforcement's cooperative work with other agencies. So, I look forward to a fuller discussion on our part of each of the recommendations and also response from our staff as to how they perceive these in terms of what we did this summer, what our current policies and standards are and yeah, and what they think these can do for us.
I wanted to add just real quickly two things, one, and then I will pick one and let others speak. One is the focus on First Amendment rights, that it's absolutely necessary that the police allow people to exercise, protesters to exercise their First Amendment rights. If that means that people are yelling in their faces, so be it. Those are First Amendment rights. And I also, I just wanted to say that none of this diminishes the harm and the trauma done to any of the protesters. The focus here is on the actions of the police, but it does not diminish what happened to the protester.
I, you know, I thought it certainly was, you know, I appreciate everyone's comments, like Janice, sort of revisiting the scope of the study, I think, was valuable to hear. And, you know, I think it's fulfilled its, the mission of this particular report. It was interesting reading it. It's been, what, almost eight months since June 3rd and it sort of brought back memories of all the uncertainty and confusion about, you know, what was actually taking place, what could potentially happen with the demonstrations, which, you know, went, were taking place over an extended period of time and went well beyond June 3rd. I mean, I was looking at when, when our, my house up here on Brown Street was visited by the demonstrators, that was June 13th. So, it extended well beyond, you know, the incident on Dubuque Street. So, it was over a very extended period of time that we were living in that, that sort of uncertainty. I was struck by the, you know, one of the items, one of the headings was regarding the decision to deny access and block Dubuque Street and how that was a decision made by the Iowa Patrol, State Patrol. Unlike so many of the decisions that were made by the Iowa City Police Department, the decision to deny access to the interstate really put the tone and structure of the demonstration into kind of a militaristic format. You had the skirmish line, which, you know, I was recalling a song from the 60s for "What It's Worth," which talked about battle lines being drawn. In a sense, that was the battle line that was established. And once that battle line was established, and granted there were other issues associated with that event, such as, you know, the order to disperse and watching the videos were impossible to hear. The demonstrators had no idea, at least most of them had no idea what was coming. But in terms of setting, establishing that battle line, when in fact, there was another way one could have responded to the desire of the demonstrators to occupy the interstate. And in fact, that's, in fact, that's what was followed after June 3rd. It just struck me that our, you know, our police officers had shown really consistent flexibility and discretion up to that point in terms of how law enforcement was conducted in terms of some of the tagging and behaviors that might, in other circumstances have been enforced, were not in this case. And yet, the key decision of denying access to the interstate, which came from the state, the Iowa City Police Department was, in fact, and this I was not aware of, responsible for, for the most part, in the use of the munitions. And so, we ended up being part of that decision made by another entity, when in fact, you know, if a more kind of yielding approach had been taken, the use of the munitions most likely would not have happened. And it was really, I think, it was the munitions, the tear gas and all the rest of it, that is what's the indelible image and memory of this entire event. So, you know, certainly, I think, understanding that and adapting, as the report noted, after that event had taken place, I think, was critical. But in looking back, seeing how that one decision resulted in, you know, the complicity of our police officers in the firing and the munitions and the, you know, the distress and trauma that that resulted in, could have been avoided and it was avoided after June 3rd. But I do think there's a lot to be learned from this. I'm pleased that the study did go back in time before June 3rd, sort of all the events that kind of led up to June 3rd and, as Susan mentioned, provided some context to it. So, yeah, I think it was a useful exercise. I'm glad we did it and, you know, continue to move forward in terms of making sure that it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I would just echo what Counselor Thomas said. I appreciate John very much how you articulated that and the position, I think, that Iowa City found itself in after having approached the demonstration so differently the few days before then. I agree with Counselor Weiner that the report does what we asked it to do and that certainly does not satisfy all the questions and there, it in fact highlights some significant holes, particularly relating to the participation of other entities who were there. I hope that we can kind of find a structure for addressing the recommendations that were provided by OIR in the broader context that we've been looking at. And we have, for our consideration, the 36 recommendations from the preliminary plan to restructure the police that we continue to engage the public and seek input on. We have the 39 recommendations in this report here. We have the 22 recommendations that we'll be considering from the CPRB. And so, I just hope that we can make a plan for kind of a framework to organize all of that in some coherent way to take that comprehensive look, because I see commonalities in some of these and I see divergences in some of these. And I think it would be helpful for us to figure out a way to parse that out together. So, that's in a forward-looking way. That's what I'm hoping for.
So, I was one of the ones that thought, you know, that what we were hearing was who made the call. That's what people wanted to know, who made the call. And so, to, you know, to ask OIR to give all of this content, at first I thought, you know, if the question is who made the call, then do we really need to go through this exercise? And so, I did vote for it to go through, but I was also thinking it wasn't totally necessary, but I also knew that it could be beneficial. And so, when I read the report, I do find it beneficial, especially how it's laid out with each topic and then recommendations under. I think it actually separates and give some insight on each element that we need to consider when it's talking about jurisdiction, mutual aid and responsibility for decision-making, or even when we talk about the flashbangs, tear gas, another ammunition and then crowd control. I think it lays out these segments that, of course, in my mind, it was all there, but it actually separates it to give it some, for us to give a consideration and thought in categories. I have to agree with Counselor Burgess that we have all these recommendations that we need to go through and how do we really navigate them. My first thought, when I was reading this, this really went into a lot of, you know, some of the 36 recommendations for reimagining the police, where we can, you know, talk about some of these things there, but then some may not actually, aren't a part of that document at this present time, but I think it could be. And then you mentioned the CPRB and the 22 recommendations there. And so, certainly I think if councilors have ideas on that, I think we can talk about that. My initial thought is to, is two, two thoughts. One, we can kind of throw this in the mix with reimagining the police and have those conversations. My other thought is that we can have staff respond to some of these, because I think that they could come back and respond to the majority of these, especially when we're, when we have some recommendations that have come forth. And so, I would just be interested to see what council wants to do or some ideas on how we move forward in doing these recommendations.
Okay. While I really agree with some recommendations of the report, I really have some concern. I don't want to just like go over them, all of them right now here, but since I'm the only one bringing concern, is not going to move forward. So, I'm not going to talk about this concern, but what I want to say, regardless with the, like, what we decision about this report and what we get, the point that we'll get to, I will say, I'll continue to believe what happened in June 3rd was wrong and I will continue to believe we need to do better. I will continue to believe we need to look into all this and what happened during 2020 with Black Lives Matter. Put that in front of us while we are restructuring, restructure the police department. That's all I want to say.
And I guess I will just mention that the recommendations, at least in my mind, are just opinions. Some, you know, I can readily agree with as Mayor Pro Tem may have, you know, talked about. And then there's some where, you know, it's not fully in agreement or not in agreement. And so, I believe that these are recommendations that we just consider and we take it as we wish and we make them our own.
I guess I would propose that we consider having perhaps something like a separate work session on all these various recommendations so that we can discuss them and figure out how to categorize them, figure out as a group at this point, even as we're still getting input, which ones we think are doable, which ones we want to discard. I mean, I don't know exactly what the categories would be, but I think that it would be helpful for us to set ourselves some goals and timelines to really look at which of these from the OIR report that we want to fold in, which of the 36 other recommendations that we want, which ones we don't want, what things that are not in any of those that we think should be added to it. And I think we need to do it in a separate session.
I really believe that we will, I mean, we need to hear recommendation from our own community members. They are the one who live in this community. They are the one who being, going to be affected by the practice of the police department. And I hope we receive some, like, recommendation from our own people who live in Iowa City to recommend what we do, rather than depend on recommendation has been done by third party.
You know, as I was thinking about recommendations of, you know, how do we, how do we move forward? You know, my, when I'm reading this, I don't have the expert knowledge, you know. I don't have the expert knowledge on a lot of these items. I, but I think certainly the community is welcome to weigh in. I also believe that we should task our chief of police to weigh in on this and to get to hear from our chief on this and see what the recommendations are from him.
Yes, and also like hopefully we will receive some feedback from the community after we translate, you know, the city manager's recommendations. And I hope we receive something from the community that will help us move forward in this recommendation.
I would agree with both the mayor and the mayor pro tem on this. I mean, I think it's really important that we get feedback from the community at large, but I agree also with the mayor in terms of we don't, I don't, he said he doesn't, we don't have that expertise in terms of how law enforcement operates. And when you talk about some of these communication issues, setting some of the standards or templates, I think they even called it for different kinds of protests and how they would respond, et cetera. So, I think it's really important to hear from law enforcement in terms of how they can incorporate, because what we need to me, what we need to send is that overarching message of how do we want our law enforcement to interact with our community and our public? How do we want people to be treated with the same, at the same token that we want to make sure everybody is safe, including law enforcement and that they can be effective in what they're doing while treating people in a manner that meets our values in this community. And so, I think when it comes to the real nitty-gritty of that, we really have to have input from law enforcement on how they can do these, how they look at these recommendations, how they can fold them into their general orders and their operations with the overarching message of this is how we expect you to interact with our public while keeping everybody safe.
So, it sounds like we, I don't know if, I just saw like a couple nodding heads, but what do we want to task specifically our chief and the city manager's office to respond, to respond to this?
I would be very interested in hearing their reaction and recommendations, whether it's, whether it's point by point or more general, but I think getting some of that information from them might help guide. But I think getting some of that information from them might help guide us in our discussion. Again, if we're keeping, if, if, if we think about what we should be doing as a council, we should be looking at things from a policy level, not necessarily from the detailed nuances of how law enforcement sets their general orders or sets every single metric of how they do things. But if we communicate that overarching goal of we expect you to keep the public safe, we expect you to do it respectfully. We expect you to do it in a way that you keep yourselves safe. I think we want to do it with a minimal, to minimize conflict, to maximize communication. Obviously, a lot of those can be contradictory at times. But if we set those overarching values and goals and say, okay, go through all these recommendations and tell us, how would you, how would you take these recommendations and utilize those in your operations procedures? Knowing what our goal as a council is in terms of how you interact with the public and see what they come back with. I just, I think that could be constructive for us as, rather than us sitting down and trying to go through 39 separate recommendations.
I guess for me personally, I'm not talking about us, but for me personally, what is really guide me is a community recommendation rather than the police recommendations. So I want to hear the community. I want to hear them, what do they think about these recommendations? And that will guide me to make a decision. Not like, because I'm, I'm a public servant, I serve the community and I want to do something that help them out. So if we are thinking about restructuring the police and we want them to like to treat the community 13 way and like do everything like in, in, in a way that care for everyone who live in this community. I want to hear it from the people who have been affected by the issue. Rather than just for someone is not, even if they are squared, but they are not affected by the issue, you know, this is not going to guide me at all.
One of the things, at least for me, when I, you know, look at what happens in the future, if there is a, you know, if there is a need to protect the community, that there is a safety issue. Certainly I was out there June 4th where there was white supremacist out and my heart sunk. You know, what happens if our community is, you know, is in a situation where there's someone or a group of people coming to do horrible things and that goes against our beliefs. That's where I believe, um, and the community can certainly weigh in. We have people that have knowledge in the community about how, how can you keep the, the community safe? What tools in your toolbox do you want to have? Um, and, and that's where I believe certainly the community can weigh in. But I, I want our, um, police department to weigh in as well. I want them to search and find out what do other communities do? I, do I believe that we, I've learned a long time ago in Iowa City, there are some very knowledgeable people on, I don't care what you're talking about. I learned that through the deer population and, and when, when people started talking about trees and all this other stuff, there's some really knowledgeable people that, you know, get into the nitty gritty. But then there is also, um, I think a need where the, where our staff needs to also get in the nitty gritty and learn what options are out there, speak to other people. So it sound like we have a, uh, both, you know, the community weighing in as well as our staff. And so we're going to task. Are we okay with having our city manager office as well as our chief of police? Or, or we'll just say law enforcement weigh in on this? Yes, I'm seeing the majority. So there you have it, city manager. And I don't know if you need anything else from us.
The, the one thing I would say, it's, it's going to take some time to work through the different sets of recommendations that you have before you, whether it's the CPRB, the preliminary plan or this report. We're going to have to prioritize which discussions come first. And one of the first things I believe that we need to do is have the discussion on protest interactions and control. It may be the most difficult conversation ahead of us, frankly. But it, it needs to happen sooner rather than later because we have to give guidance to, to our staff on, on how they're to move forward. And one of the most difficult aspects of this is, is that, you know, your First Amendment rights, your First Amendment rights and our police are not going to be arbiters of, of the message from, from the protesters. In other words, whether you're protesting topic A or topic B, we have to have a, a very similar approach to protecting First Amendment rights. And that can be, that can be a challenging thing. So we need to really kind of guide you. I think that's our job as staff to guide you through our policies and talk about the changes that are needed and just make sure that the expectations are clear to our staff, that they're clear to the community. And again, those are going to be, I think, some challenging discussions to have, but, but they're critical. And so I, I do like the idea of, you know, working through all these recommendations systematically. And, and I think one of the things that Chief Liston and I can do as we come back to you on this OAR report is, is try to front load or, or frame up for you some of those discussions that we need to have on, on protest management.
All right. Anything else on this?
I just, I want to make sure we don't lose track of the possibility of a timeline. I think it's really important that we give care and careful consideration and get the input that we're looking for from, you know, the community, absolutely. But are there, I mean, what, what can we do to help make sure that we keep moving this forward and, and don't lose track of it?
Well, I think Chief Liston and I can be pretty, pretty responsive in turning, turning this around. What, what I envision, um, coming back to you is, is simply focused for now on the OAR report. Looking at those 39 recommendations, maybe just a, a short narrative blurb that kind of indicates at least how we see, here's, here's what falls in the staff bucket. Here's what falls in the policy council bucket. And, and just kind of walk you through there. We might find that, you know, neither staff nor council are interested in some of these recommendations. And as one of you said earlier, I forget who, there's a lot of overlap. So while 39 may seem kind of daunting, um, a lot of these get tied together. And I, and I don't, you know, I think as you work through it, it becomes a little bit more manageable. So I think we do go point by point. We provide just a short narrative and, and describe, you know, again, whether we think we can move forward as staff. And, and, you know, give you that opportunity to say timeout, no, we need to talk about that or just kind of give us the green light to start working on that. And then those that really deserve the council deliberation, discussion, kind of expectation setting.
Where do we stand on or where do, do you stand on getting the 36, the other set of recommendations? The 36 recommendations translated into the, the several languages so that we can, we can outreach on that?
Yeah, those, uh, those translations were finished Friday of last week. So you can find those on the website with the other preliminary plan information. And I'm currently talking with a few different members of the community about a public engagement contract, essentially, as, as we talked about before, working with some, some organizations and individuals in the, in the community that could do some of that public engagement for us and bring that back kind of unfiltered to the city. So we're, we're making good progress, but you, you can find those translated documents on our website. So if you want to send them out to folks that you know or organizations that you think would be interested, please do that. And they can use the feedback mechanisms that are already set up on the website.
And Jeff, if you can remind me, do we have a deadline for that, for this whole thing? Or why we are, you know? Okay. Yes, that's my question. You have deadline?
No, there's, there's really no, no deadline. We moved forward on two of the recommendations right out of the gate because there were some grant funds associated with those that we needed to act on. Your budget that you're going to be considering over the next couple of meetings has funds for some of the recommendations, not all of them. For example, um, the halftime outreach position. And there's a civilian supervisory position, the city manager's office communications position. Those are built into the budget. But we don't necessarily have to act on those until you all have had that chance to weigh in. So, you know, worst case scenario is we, we budget for say that communications position. Ultimately, the council, you decide you want to go a different route and pursue a different strategy. We just don't fill that position. So I think we can take our time with that, as much time as, as you need. I, you know, for the groups that I'm talking to about going out and getting public comment and bringing it back, you're probably looking at a couple of months. We have to take the time to bring those individuals and organizations up to speed. Some of them probably haven't even read the plan. They may have questions about the intent and the reason behind them. And then, and then they would go out and, and probably take a, you know, a month or so to, to, to do the engagement as they see fit. So you're, you're probably looking at another couple of months.
All right. Anything else? All right, we're going to go to clarification of agenda items. Before the formal meeting.
I don't know what happened.
Have it again?
I don't know what happened. I suddenly, I guess, everybody disappeared.
Oh, we can see you.
Yeah, I, I cannot see any picture, any, like any video. I just see myself.
Oh, I wonder if it, well, that's kind of weird, but in the top right.
I now see. I see you now.
Yeah, it might be.
Not the rest.
It may be on speaker view and not gallery view. That's the top right. It says view, so maybe you can change that.
It is gallery view.
Yes.
But yeah, I just see your picture on Thomas.
Well, hopefully it'll get fixed sometimes. Yeah. All right. Clarification of agenda items for the formal meeting. The work session, I'm sorry, the info packet for February 4th.
Uh, IP two on February 4th. I just wanted to commend our department heads and, and thank them for the financial information and for doing what they can during these very troubling times to keep our heads above the water, so to speak financially. It's a good job. Looks, looked good. There's some troubling numbers, but there's some good numbers and it's balancing out and it looks, thank them for doing that. IP four, um, the pandemic, uh, kind of on the lines of financial, gun, the pandemic relief grants to 27 Iowa City small businesses, uh, over $300, something thousand dollars. I was happy to see this, uh, because of course we'd like to see those and other businesses continue to thrive in our community. So that was good to see.
I like that, uh, one of the qualifications was for minority or women business, entre- entrepreneurs or, or enterprise, I guess. Um, so that was really good to have that a part of that. Any others from February 4th info packet? Info packet February 11th?
Well, we've been talking a lot about the work session topics and IP four is the list of pending work session topics. And there's quite a few on there and some of them have been on there for quite a while. And I realized we've had some pretty important, uh, issues that have come up that we've talked about in, in work sessions. But some of these topics and we're adding some more are important. And I just kind of wondered when and how and where we were going to plug them in to start talking about some of them.
Sure. I, I guess it might be helpful if we kind of go through and just make sure that everything that is on there, we want to, we want to keep on there as a council. The only one that, well, I, I guess we can just go through all of them just to state if we're comfortable keeping them on there. And then if there are some guidance or some thoughts on if we need to accelerate some or what we need to do, that would be kind of a good discussion to have as well. I do know number three is something that I'm, I'm, I'm interested in having discussions on, um, probably before the, the summer, potentially. Especially since COVID is still and will be in our community. Now, yeah, yeah. And I think just as a reminder, the recommendations, if I remember correctly, for having alcohol usage policies in city parks was really at the shelters. So it would be at, at some of the shelters when they're reserved. Is my understanding at least. But I think it would be worth having that conversation within the, within the next month or two.
I think one thing I just encourage you to, to consider. I think Counselor Weiner mentioned this before, but with, with all the recommendations related to the police department, it's going to be really hard to, to work through those, which we need to do with some level of urgency and, and get to, get to all these items. These items are pretty well suited for 15, 20, 30 minute discussions. You can knock out one or two in your, in your hour and a half that we, we typically have on these Tuesdays. Processing several dozen recommendations doesn't always fit well into an hour and a half box. We might need to just find a good two to three hour work session to work through some of those more complex items. And, and that could free up some time in meetings like this to, to address that. I know that's difficult and that's another ask in, in your busy schedules. But from a process standpoint, it could help us move a little quicker than we have been this past year.
I think that's a good idea if we can do that, so we can free some of those items.
So I wonder if, if I'd say a lot of not, not enough hits. So maybe during mayor pro time, mayor pro team and the city managers weekly meetings, maybe we can talk about this and try to figure out a plan for it. If, if council is okay with that. All right. Sounds great. Any other items from February 11?
Uh, IP five, the city attorney retirement letter, Eleanor. Happy for you and wish you well, but you will be missed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for many, many years of service. Really appreciate my time here with you. So I, I had an opportunity to share some thoughts with her directly. So really appreciate what you've done.
I've talked to all of you, so I feel, feel good about that.
Yes. Thank you for reaching out, that's what, great, thank you.
Definitely will be missed.
Yes.
Which is the best time, good luck, yeah.
Yes, and I know I'm, I'm responsible for at least two of those gray hairs up there.
There's been a lot of them this past year.
Yeah, so congratulations.
I hope we never have a year like that, twenty twenty.
Yes, congratulations, that's exciting.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and it starts another process that, that we as council will need to deal with.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I don't know if, if, I, I mean, I assume Jeff and maybe the mayor, mayor pro town will talk about kind of how to structure that and what you want to do with that. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, just share a preliminary thought and, and, you know, April will be here before we know it, so this, this will, this will move really fast and recruitments don't always move really fast. So what I would encourage, I think, what I think would be helpful is if we had a couple, two, three council members that wanted to work with me and our human resources team to just develop a recruitment plan, look at the job description and, and kind of take care of some of those planning items. You, you, we could update council at a upcoming meeting, make sure everybody's comfortable with, with whatever direction is, is, is decided and then, and then move from there. But, you know, whether you want to decide that tonight, if you want to take that approach or if you want to dedicate some time at your next meeting to talk through that, I think it, you probably need to get the conversation going sooner rather than later.
I think since we have some time, why we don't appoint three people right now to work with you on that?
I would be very much interested in doing it, given the eleven plus years I've had on council and been involved in hiring two city managers and two city clerks. I think there's some, some background there that I think would be valuable and I'd be interested in being a part of that.
I'd also be interested in that unless you all think it's a really bad idea to have the lawyer on the lawyer subcommittee, but.
No, I think that's a good idea, actually.
I think it's good. For law.
Yep, I, 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 I or mayor pro team, I would like either one of us to be a part. And I don't know if mayor pro team, if I can.
Yes, of course, mayor, go for it.
Okay, I'll, I'll go for it if you don't want to, or if you don't.
Yeah, go for it, we always talk, so.
All right, I'll go for it, thank you. Great, all right, so we have that. All right, any other items from information packet two eleven?
I just wanted to highlight the training that's happening on Thursday, which I think was IP seven in the February eleventh info packet on microaggressions. I don't know if there's still seats open and that, but another one in a series of trainings that we're offering free to the public, I think, to help people build their skills in anti racism. Just wanted to highlight that.
Yep.
Right. Anything else? All right, so council updates on assigned boards, commissions and committees.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
All right, sounding like no updates from committees at this time. Well, I think we will adjourn until seven PM. I wanted to remind the public that the first meeting in April will be switching, transitioning to our four PM work sessions and to our six PM formal meetings. So just keep that in mind, we have another month going at five PM and then we'll switch one hour earlier. We will see you all, yeah, we'll see you all soon.